Brookings County Commission for December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please rise for the pledge. Next on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during the agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date, and we have nobody signed in this morning. So we'll move on to number four, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Discussion or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Number five, recognition of employees' anniversaries. Commissioner Vanderwall.
Good morning. Peggy can't be here today, but this is a certificate of appreciation to Peggy Steen on the fifth day of December, two thousand and twenty-three by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of fifteen years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Finance Office. All right. All right, Chris? On behalf of the Brookings County Commission, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Chris Mallhair on this fifth day of December, two thousand and twenty-three by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of ten years of dedicated exceptional service to the Brookings Highway Department. All right, Dave? On the behalf of the Brookings County Commission, we'd like to present this certificate of appreciation to Dave Booblets on this fifth day of December, two thousand and twenty-three by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of five years of dedicated exceptional service to the Brookings County Highway Department. Congratulations, Dave. And the fourth one for today, Brian can't be here today, but this is a certificate of appreciation to Brian Goosted on this fifth day of December, two thousand and twenty-three by five years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Highway Department. Thank you.
We have recognition here for Richard Haugen. The South Dakota Emergency Management Association at the standards of professionalism established by the association is hereby designate a certified emergency manager. Congratulations. All right, next on the agenda is the consent items. Let's include the minutes, travel and education requests, personnel, action notices, cellular authorizations, and the human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, comments, changes, additions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Progman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number eight, letter A is approval of claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, comments on the claims. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Progman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, department head reports. Sheriff, would you like to start?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We got fifty inmates at this particular time. We have seventeen that are Brookings County inmates. I have two from Flandre and fifteen from the Marshal Service. As you know, as you remember, I have a contract with the Marshal Services for ten, but I had room and we took five more on last week, so. Twenty-four-seven is up a little bit. I have a hundred and forty-four participants. I have forty-nine on PBTs, thirteen on remote breath test, I have sixteen on scram bracelets, and there's thirty on UEAs, so that department continues to stay busy. We're still having a lot of deer accidents. They're still moving around out there, so we continue to have deer accidents. So far, no, maybe I shouldn't even talk about snow, but that's helped not having to deal with snow events right now, so I hope I don't, it didn't jinx us now. Also then, the other thing is that a week or so ago, we had those two that stolen a car out of Sioux Falls, and it was in Arlington and then in Volga and stuff, and they're in custody with a fifty-thousand-dollar bond. Anyway, otherwise, I think we've been keeping the state's attorneys, law enforcement's been keeping me busy, or I should say the jail busy, especially on weekends, and that goes over to the state's attorney's office. So I know we've kept each other busy here, so. Also, I attended the Volga Council meeting last night and talked to them about, you know, things that are going on, and I told them I'd be back in January to go over the yearly stats for Volga, and so far, and then I talked to them about the new K-9 I'm getting, and they graciously gave the sheriff's office thirty-four-hundred dollars to go towards the K-9, so I thought that was nice to them, so, anyway. Unless you guys have some questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bob?
Good morning. On November twenty-eighth, I went to a South Dakota Emergency Management Association Board Meeting in Chamberlain, and one of the topics is Senate Bill, a proposed Senate Bill two thirty-nine that's coming up, where they want to take a look at the emergency management and possibly do away with county emergency management and make it into a regional type thing. And as a SDEMA board, we're going to send a letter out to all the county commissioners to see if you're willing to oppose that particular bill. Because what that, basically what that bill does is it takes away any of the federal funding that comes down to the county and keeps it all in the state. Then, we really don't know all the ramifications yet, but it looks like the emergency management programs in the communities would disappear and would all become a regional type thing. So just to keep you informed on that. There is a legislative luncheon or breakfast later this month. I went ahead and signed up for it. I want to attend it if possible and see if Mr. Owen has any input on this particular bill. November last week, Richard called into the radio station to discuss our emergency management topics, which we do once a week. We had a county safety committee meeting on Wednesday last week. I was a little running late to it, so Ms. Stepherson really helped out on there. November thirty to December two, I went over to St. Paul and attended the Fall Naco Board Meeting. One of the big topics, of course, was the farm bill coming up that they're working on. And yesterday, we had a South Dakota Office of Emergency Management Region Six meeting here in Brookings over at the East Fire Station, and then later in the day, I was interviewed by South Dakota Public Broadcasting about our PPCC and POD development. Show will air in January. I'll let everyone know when the show is supposed to be aired. And then we've got a planning and zoning meeting tonight. Any questions?
Thank you. Austin?
Morning.
Morning.
I'll give you guys a rundown of the events and attendance and stuff like that since October tenth, the last meeting I attended, but through the archery range, we had two hundred and ten people. The gun range, we've had four hundred and twenty-one. We've had eighty-three events, so it's been pretty busy going into the fall. Events and programming, JOAD, the Junior Olympic Archery Development Group that uses the archery range, finished up their season, and they also held their kind of year-end archery shoot on the second and third. Went very good. They had fifty-six shooters all the way North Dakota, Minnesota, Iowa. They actually had a little college from Storm Lake come down Buena Vista, so that was pretty neat. Everybody really enjoys the facility, so that's nice to see. The JOAD winter session starts January eighth for those individuals who have kids, grandkids that want to participate in that. It's Fall Y'all, our little craft fair we did. We did end up with eighteen booths. The attendance wasn't very well, so maybe we'll restructure that, but we did actually have a lady who reached out and asked if she could host hers there, so that's nice. So she'll do all the legwork for that and just pay facility fee, so that's nice for the facility. Interns with Game Fish and Parks, that went very well for the fall. We got together with them and scheduled some events for two thousand and twenty-four, so we'll be looking for those. On December twelfth, they're doing basic ice fishing, a kind of safety tutorial, so that's pretty neat for young individuals or even people trying to get into ice fishing. If they want to come out and check that out, that'd be cool. Santa's on the fifteenth, everybody loves that. We got our lights on the building. People really love coming out to the facility and watching those. Santa's coming on the fifteenth, we're going to get camels again. On the eighth of January as well, our gun league's going to start. We'll be doing that every Monday night for eight weeks. The two individuals doing that really like to do that, so they're going to come back and do it again. And then we got some classes on the calendar. A lot of people are asking about basic pistol classes, so we'll try to schedule a few more of those for two thousand and twenty-four. Building maintenance, building's holding up pretty good for two thousand and twenty-three, just changing out lights, regular stuff. The office addition, I did add some pictures for that to kind of keep you guys up to date. Hopefully that's done this week, get the invoice for that, get everything paid for year-end, and then get the money back from the state to offset some of those costs. And our pistol range committee and our archery range committee. Pistol range committee, we usually get good attendance for that, but the archery range committee, we don't really have one, it's more just a representative from the archery range side, so we're kind of looking at restructuring that. The gun range, obviously, we have the range safety officers and the volunteers, and that's, those meetings are pretty well attended, but we may look at restructuring that a little bit for upcoming years. Anything else you guys want from me at all or questions? I'll give you a year-end report in January of the financials and the attendance from two thousand and twenty-three and compare all that and pictures and projects, but if you guys want anything else, let me know.
Maybe just how attendance compares to last year, you know?
The two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-one? Yep.
Yeah.
I can put that in there. Other than that, Merry Christmas.
All right, we'll move on. We do have a scheduled nine o'clock, but we're not there yet. Number ten, action to approve agreement twenty-three dash seventy-two, a status South Dakota lease agreement for the Game Fish and Parks office space in Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Okay, discussion, comments. Austin?
Yeah, just adding that extra the additional rent, and then they did add another five years, which I think is good for the building, so this will actually go out until two thousand and thirty-three, I believe. Starting January first, but.
So this is for all the space, the space that they have right now?
Yeah, the four. Yep, correct. The, I brought the other one with, but you currently, before I started, you had four hundred and seventy-five square foot, added on the hundred and eighty, so approximately six hundred and fifty-five square feet. So yeah, this will be everything.
So this is the one lease for all four spaces?
Correct, yep.
So the other lease that we have is going to be null and void?
How, yeah, how do we approach that? From my understanding, yes, and that's, they have an individual who drafted all this up, and I believe that's how it would work, but.
Because we had a copy.
From my understanding, this was the amended one that you guys would sign to add those two offices, but technically you still had five years on to the existing one that you guys signed five years ago, so I don't know how you would.
And that's, that was my confusion, is the other lease still in effect, and this is additional lease, or are we putting them all into one? If we are, then we in here that says the other lease is void.
Yep. I can talk to them just to say something in there as far as that, yeah. My understanding, this was more of an amendment to the current one, but yeah, I can ask them and then bring that back to the next meeting.
Yeah, I just, I didn't know for sure. I just didn't want to have two leases out there, and everybody gets confused when it comes back.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
This is either an amendment or it supersedes the previous one.
Okay. See, I can ask them and then throw something in this one to, yeah, transfer over to this January first, that works.
Yeah, that looks, says, says on the top of it, it says draft, and then, looking at the other one, the other one's a signed lease, it doesn't say draft, so.
Which one are you looking at?
The very first one that's up here on the thing, at the top, it says draft up there.
Yep, which one are you looking at that's signed?
That's the one after that, the second one, that we actually have going. It's on page seventy-seven, yeah, right here. So that's the current lease that we have.
Yep, I have that one too, yep, yep. Because I know we talked about this back in June, and they brought back basically just initial form to get the project going, saying they would be willing to pay the rent and pay half those costs.
Right. Well, let's, I think next time, let's try to clean it up before the end of the year, obviously, and just either get something in writing in that draft lease of the new one that this supersedes the previous lease signed by this date.
Sounds good. Yeah, I'll do that and have that for the next meeting, so we can still get them in there first part of the year.
All right, so we'll just table this, or we'll do we need to table it, make a table or just bring it back next week? You would actually make a motion to table it until the next meeting? Okay.
I make a motion to table it to the December nineteenth meeting.
There you go.
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Excuse me, number ten, letter B, action to approve appointment of David Erickson as Brookings County Coroner, as per South Dakota Code of Fair Law three dash four dash three for a one-year appointment to begin January first, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, comments? Have you seen anything?
No, this is the similar action to what we did when you appointed Dr. Richard Heave years ago to the coroner position. Keep in mind, this is an elected position, so the appointment would be for one year, would run January to December of two thousand and twenty-four, at which time someone could file a petition next year to run for coroner. If that doesn't happen, then the commission just continues to appoint. We typically appoint annually.
All right. Any other comments, discussion? Sheriff, any comments? Nope, okay. All right. All right. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, moving right along, commission directors report.
I really don't have a whole lot either to kill time to get to our nine upcoming dates that we have. Tomorrow is the mayor's holiday celebration at five o'clock out at Dakota Bank Center. I believe Bob mentioned earlier Wednesday, then thirteenth, there's the Chamber Legislative Look Ahead. I'll need to see if I can track down some additional information on that. It was supposed to be Wednesday morning, but I don't know if they have found a location for that yet. And then we have a couple of upcoming holidays where offices will be closed in celebration of the holidays, but other than that, I really don't have anything. We are, we'll be gearing up for the meeting next, our next meeting on the nineteenth to do some of those year-end things, contingency resolution, some potential for some assignments and whatnot, so those will all be coming at the last meeting of the year.
The RSPP required for the Chamber's Legislative Outlook, have we sent that in?
I believe we have, yeah, yeah.
All right. State's Attorney, Austin here. Appreciate you filling in.
Yeah, no problem. So Austin Ochsner, Deputy State's Attorney, filling in for Dan Nelson today. Dan is in Boston this week doing some trial training out there with some of the opportunities that we have for training and growth and development. There's been a little bit of interest in the posted Deputy State's Attorney position that I think we're going to reach out to some folks when Dan gets back, so a little bit of an update on that end. Other than that, everything else is going pretty well.
All right, thank you. Commissioners report. We can get to nine o'clock. Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you. On November twenty-eighth, Commissioner Jensen, along with myself and Bob Hill, attended the Madera Divergent Dyke. We are making some progress through that, and we'll continue to move forward with that. Also, on the twenty-eighth, I attended the Ag Appreciation Banquet. Good crowd, very good crowd, and great food as well. And then last night, I attended the Innovation Center Celebration. That's my report, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Bartley, please.
Thank you. On the twenty-seventh of November, I went to a shared board meeting out at the Research Park. It was a shared board meeting between the BDC and the operations of the Research Park. It was a good opportunity for each of the boards to get to know each other. They're making a lot of changes out there to operate under one type of accounting system, and that was shared with us, also some of their projects and alignments on how they want to proceed were presented to us, so that was a good meeting. On the twenty-eighth, went to the Chamber Ag Banquet also, and we had four of our commissioners there, which was more the city had. Anyway, you knew I'd say that. Anyway, on December fourth, at the Innovation Celebration last night, also out at the Research Park, well-attended, they gave out a couple of awards for the entrepreneurial one, I think, the New Business Award. Both gave presentations, and it was a good evening and had a good time. That's my report.
All right, Mr. Jensen.
Also, on the twenty-eighth, I attended the Madera Divergent Project Meeting, went well, moving forward with that. On the twenty-eighth, also went to the Ag Appreciation Supper. Commissioner Vanderwall said it was well-attended, not very many open seats in the place. Yesterday, went to the Innovation Campus Celebration, it was also well-attended, and it's interesting the different businesses that they have out there. I'd like to thank Dr. Heave for his years of service as a coroner and his recommended qualifications for what the coroner actually does. It was very interesting to figure, to find out what they actually do, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hostler.
So I attended on the thirtieth, the Domestic Abuse Shelter Board Meeting. We went over some proposed construction and remodel for adding a couple offices, looking for some security stuff and adding cameras and that kind of thing, and then went over the upcoming budget and funding, so that is my report.
All right. I had a late week there. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the Ag Banquet or the Shared Board Meeting because of work obligations, but I was able to make the Research Park Celebration last night. Again, as the other gentleman said, it well-attended and very nice celebration, so. All right, we have a nine o'clock, which we're a little short of. I guess we'll take a little bit of a recess here for till nine o'clock, and we'll do our scheduled agenda items. We do have one more invitation here that is not on our agenda. It is an invitation from President Barry Dunn from SDSU to meet with South Dakota Border Regents Reception. That is Wednesday, the 13th from six to eight. Six to eight. So we do need to RSVP by the 6th, which is tomorrow. That is a reception with the South Dakota Border Regents. They'll be meeting in Brookings. And that's at McCory Gardens Education Center. Six to eight.
Does anybody know if they plan to attend? I can have Ryan forward me the email and I could do a RSVP. Yeah, Mike, yes. Yes, yes, yes. You did already, okay. So the other four though, you want me to RSVP for you? Can you forward that to me, Ryan?
I just did.
Okay.
It's at the McCory Gardens Education Center. All right. Let me get this in here. Okay, it is nine o'clock and so we have a scheduled agenda item. First of them, actually, we have a couple. First one is a public hearing action to approve Resolution 23-15, a supplemental budget resolution. Is there a motion? The first action is to approve a cash transfer from 101 General Fund to 301 County Building Fund in the amount of $301,003.82.
Actually, let's do the public hearing first.
Sorry. We'll open the public hearing. Is there any?
We need a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion to approve? Public hearing?
Go move.
Second. We'll open the public hearing now. Is there any proponents? Any proponents? Now, is there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing now, we'll close the public hearing. And the action on the table would be to approve a transfer, cash transfer, excuse me.
No.
Close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Now we have an action to approve a transfer from 101 General Fund to 301 County Building Fund in the amount of $301.03.82. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, discussion, comments?
This is all money that was for insurance reimbursements for, still from the derecho that we need to supplement now that we're replacing both the roof shed and the east shed. So we're getting that money put back. That money is being expensed out of the 301 funds. So there was some money that was actually received into general funds. The second action that you took is to move that cash over to account for that.
All right. Any further comments, discussion? Hearing now, please call the roll.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Next on the Schedule Agenda, number B is discussion and possible action on a commission project's funding request. City of Aurora, Aurora Fire Department with Colin Knype, Maintenance Utilities Supervisor. Forward and.
All right. Thanks, Commission, for letting us come in today. With me is Mark Pottas, Assistant Fire Chief. In Aurora, we have a pump house, which we are looking to do an upgrade to the pump system that is currently there. So we're looking to allocate some of the ARPA dollars, which would be used to pay for the installation and the pump costs. Currently, that pump to fill our fire trucks takes about 35 minutes. So we like to use that because our water tower is significantly undersized for the population of the town we have. Also could be used for emergency management and fire protection because we do not have a fire hydrant on the street that that is at. So a larger pump could be used as fire protection, also loading trucks and not put a tax on our water system. So the cost of the pump is $8,370. Not added to this because we aren't 100% sure how deep it is, 50, 175 feet. The other estimate would be about 3,000 in materials and time and labor. So a total of about $11,370 to have that new pump installed. Which the new pump would be able to pump up to 150 gallons a minute, which is pretty compatible to where our hydrant system is in the town with the pressure we have.
All right.
Tell me, is this a waste too? Now, with the fire protection of a lot of the local farmers.
Is there future plans for the water supply to Aurora?
Yes, after the first of the year, we are submitting our funding package to the state to upgrade our water tower to 250,000 gallon water tower with a secondary line coming from 34th to Aurora that we would own. So it's in the plans, so, but we can't apply for funding until after the first of the year. And it would be a couple of years before that project would be completed.
This, this well here, this pump is basically a well.
Yep.
That's down, it's not connected to any type of rural water or city water or?
Down in the aquifer.
Yep.
It used to be the city water supply, but the nitrates and everything got too high. So that's when we put the water line in from Brookings.
And that's the one you would expand on, would be that one down the road from 34th?
Yep.
And with the request? You had an initial request on your ARPA, so-called ARPA dollars, we put it in commission special project. Is Stacy, is there intentions to take that off the remaining balance on this?
This is a new request. This is separate from the Aurora Fire Department request.
Yep, but the Fire Department made a request for $287,000. And I believe you've used 119 for the new truck. Is that correct?
Yeah, if you want to set up, both of you there.
Currently, we're. Got some of our ARPA funds left. And we would be available to use part of our Fire Department funds for this because it does supplement the Fire Department. We use that wellhouse extensively. We use it for all our training and other needs too.
So this is additional request beyond what the initial was?
We could use part of the funds that were appropriated for the Fire Department for this, yes. Because I still have 47,000 after this radio payment that's on your agenda for today.
Right. So our sheet that was handed out to us there, they've spent, of their 287,000, they've spent all of it except for 4769. Basically, we have for our numbers, which is obviously very close to your same numbers. So is there plans to use that 47? Do you, I mean, when you made the request, you had those dollars kind of allocated for, for needs and stuff. Are those going to be spent? Is this something additional to that or?
We're, we're still working on supplying other stuff for it too. We, we understand the city's need here and it also assists us greatly in fire protection and also within the county fire protection because we have another fill point. Because our hydrant system won't supplement a shuttle system for any duration of time.
Some of this is additional?
This is a different ask, probably from the City of Aurora, not necessarily from the Aurora Fire Department, I would think. You know, it looks like the bids to City of Aurora. So this would be an additional call, so. And if you look at that, we have, you can see what we've allocated, what we have left. It looks like we have about 870,000, 71,000, very close available. And you can see that the Fire Departments that we, back in 2022, invested in have been gradually spending their money down on, on the things they were, were doing and stuff, so. Further discussion or a motion?
Just a quick question on the $11,370, yeah, $370 was your total cost? Okay. Of that, the Fire Department still has the 47,000 supposedly. The city itself installing this pump and using it, other than pumping for the fire trucks, who else were you pumping for?
Farmers use it, contractors, emergency management, it would be helpful. So if there is a fire where trucks are coming back to load, that we can load them there instead of.
Outside the fire trucks, you still have some other uses. They paying for water that you're pumping?
What's that?
The other uses outside the Fire Department, are they paying you for the uses or, or getting water from you?
Anyone can use that water, we don't charge for that.
I know the utilities in Brookings charges if people go out there and buy water for their trucks. Is that an option for you to start charging for that?
We can discuss that, I'd take that up with council.
Yeah, I guess my, my concern is that, that we have money available still in the Special Projects Fund in your, your account already of 47,000. And maybe we should have you come back with a proposal of, you know, 5,000, we can cover the other 6,000. We probably would look at charging people to use this facility or use this water outside the Fire Department. Fire Department gets it free, obviously. But maybe come back with a proposal. I don't, I don't think this has to be decided tonight other than the fact that I certainly wanted to participate in it. It's just people look at these and say, where, where's your skin in it also from the city side of it?
I can discuss that with council. Set a rate.
Yeah, I don't know what the water rate the city charges. Of course, yours is a, you know, has a nitrate problem and theirs probably does not, but.
It's not a drinkable water at all, no.
It's not drinking water, but you're, you're selling it for commercial use or private use or application somewhere. So you should probably have a fee associated with it, I would guess.
All right. One question I have, where is this well located at?
On the west side of town, off Pine and Sanamo Street. It's actually, the old building was torn down last summer and they built a new building to house the pump head because the old one was so bad. So it's got a brand new building cover over it. We're going to actually insulate it now and put heat in it too, so that it can be used year round and actually be more functional for everybody now.
When do you anticipate that the other water project could be completed so you'd have sufficient water? I think this is a great idea to plan for, you know, emergencies. I know Aurora has issues when you have any kind of fire, the town runs out of water.
Current plan is to have water tower up and going by 2026. It'll depend on what funding package we get and what timeline contractors will be available.
Any further discussion? I'm going to make a motion that we approve this project. The 11,370 out of our commission projects. I think we've got adequate funds for it. I think it is a long-term project that will help for the safety. It is immediate needs. I know how long it can be before these projects get done through the state and through the federal government. And it could be quite a few years. I would just hope again that you would offer this up to residents in the county or that kind of stuff on, on emergency purposes. You know, obviously, you're not testing it for drinking or any of that kind of stuff. But, you know, for water and cattle or whatever needs to be happening there. So I'll make that motion to approve this out of commission projects.
Second.
A second? Okay. Further discussion? Further discussion?
I also prefer with Commissioner Krogman, that time, time is kind of essence here to get the pump installed. It, especially for the emergency part of it.
All right. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thanks, Chairman. Okay. Letter C on our Schedule Agenda Items is the discussion on bridge inspections with Colin Swaska from Project Manager from Banner Associates.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, so today I'm just here to give a little summary of this year's inspections. This year, the decision was made to split Brookings County's bridges into two inspection cycles. So this year included everything east of I-29, plus additional three structures west of the interstate that are on annual cycle. So in total, there are 89 structures that I looked at, plus nine structures that are under 20 feet, since I was out doing it anyway. The reason for the split, I think, was largely every year or every two years, I'd hand Brian Gustad a long list of here's maintenance and repair items he can do. And then they do a bunch of them and then there's nothing to do the following year. So this year, we're trying to split it so it's more evenly dispersed, so they have continuous projects that they can work on. In addition to that, we're working on a revamped GIS database and interface for the county to use. The goal of this is to identify repairs in this database, so it's not just a list, it's alive. They can take an iPad out, go out there, get to the structure, see what needs to be done, make the repairs, document it and record it so that we have a live registry or record of the maintenance. Because going forward with the big improvement grants or bridge improvement grants, having maintenance records is going to be more important and the state will eventually become more picky about what they're receiving. As far as inspections go, there was one structure that was previously unposted that is now recommended to be posted. That is a structure about two miles south Elkton on County Road 33. The recommended posting was 29, single unit, 48 combination. That's similar to the load postings that are recommended for the two structures north of Bushnell on 25. Hopefully, it's not a real significant impact, but just did a load rating on it and that's based on the type of structure and the condition, that's just where we ended up at with it. That structure south of Elkton is currently, we're currently studying that with the preliminary engine grant. So it is in the program. We're sizing what the replacement will be. So it's nothing, it's not new and unexpected that the structures deteriorating or, and that this is going to happen. Additionally, there are three structures that I recommended be placed on an annual cycle just to their continued deterioration in their state. One of those is a structure south of Elkton and then another two on a township road, 473rd Avenue, 38 north and south of there, two short structures there. Kind of the typical things I see out there with the inspections. There's several steel bridge or steel beam bridges with concrete decks that the concrete decks are deteriorating significantly along the edges. The bridge south of Elkton is one of them, the two north of Bushnell are another example. The concrete is just deteriorating, it's years and years of chloride saturation into it. And it works its way on the edge and it just keeps working to the center. So those structures are all scheduled to be replaced soon. The two north of Bushnell are, we have grants and we plan to, or we're just getting underway with the design of the replacements. The ones off of Elkton, we anticipate applying for a grant next year after we have the replacement structure sized. Other things I see would be decaying timber piles, substructure units, more. Other things I see would be decaying timber piles, substructure units, more... More worrisome would be the two-span structures where it's a timber pile bent, just because there's no redundancy there. Luckily, there's getting to be fewer of those. We've replaced one this last year on County Road nineteen down by the country club, and then there's two more that we have the designs ready to go. The DOT has given us bid authorization, and we just need to put those projects out for bid. One of them is a structure on County Road twenty-seven, south of fourteen there over Madera Creek. I know that one's probably a thorn in a lot of people's sides, so hopefully, we can get that out for bid soon and get that under construction. Additionally, there are other single-span bridges with timber pile abutments. Over time, some of those piles are rotting on the inside. We also see some rot on the pile caps, some of those, there may be some options for rehabilitation, and that'll be something that I need to figure out with Brian, how we're going to approach some of those because we can't schedule every bridge for replacement and expect it to get done in the time it needs to be done. So we need to get creative on ways to keep things serviceable without full replacement. Going forward, you know, I talked a little bit about that revamped GIS system for managing repairs and maintenance. I'd like to work with Brian to establish a more systematic maintenance routine as far as, you know, certain types of structures and certain roadways should have this type of maintenance done every year, and then that's just expected that if it doesn't get done, you make sure you get it done the following year, and maybe we look into more intensive maintenance projects such as crack sealing or flood sealing on some of these newer concrete bridges that we've put in. Might as well do what we can to take care of them so that we're hopefully well exceed that seventy-five life or seventy-five-year life cycle that we anticipate when we design these new bridges.
That's a brief summary of where we're at. I don't know if you have any questions for me?
I had a couple. What are some of the reoccurring maintenance issues that you find common?
You know, the simple would be just brushing or sweeping decks off. You get some of these bridges that have curbs, you know, a lot of debris collects along there, especially if there was a chip seal on that road, you have all that pea gravel, it builds up there, collects moisture and just retains moisture, plugs any deck drains that are there. So keeping that clear, I think, is a pretty, pretty common. If they're not clear, it'd be, it's pretty important and simple. Other things, you know, signage, but that's not a real, real big concern. We don't have a whole lot of steel structures that are painted, especially on a paved road anymore, so, but there are a few. Maintaining paint more is deterioring would be good. It's not something that's really been done to this point, and I think a lot of it, at this point, is hard to go back and do anything significant, meaningful on it. We're better off, some of these older structures, just looking towards replacement. But there are a few of those newer precast double T structures that had the steel abutments, and I think it'd be important to start doing some maintenance on the paint on those, especially the ones that are on paved roads.
You mentioned the bridge south of Elkton. It's posted at forty-eight ton, then?
For the combination, yes.
So legal loaded, semi, and still utilize that structure? At ninety-six, so...
Just a quick question to follow up on Commissioner Jensen's request on the type of maintenance, preventive maintenance you'd like to see. Have you got a written report for Brian that says what you said today, basically, that he's looked at, or have you just had a conversation with him? What's the follow-up to your report? Will there be a presentation to him?
He has my list of, I think, repairs, and once, well, we're still working on getting this GIS system kind of set up, and once I get something to sit down and look at it with him, I'm going to go, I want to sit down and just talk, these are the maintenance items I want to schedule on there. What do you think for the frequency? Is that doable? I don't want to put a whole bunch of stuff on there that I know he doesn't think he can do every year, you know, but try and get it, something that is manageable and both that I would recommend be done, so...
Yeah, it would be interesting for me, anyway, to see that in writing of some sort, what you've recommended, and then I can follow up with Brian on what he thinks is doable, not doable, and if there's a pathway to get it done, we'll want to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any further comments or questions? All right, I think that's it, so, thank you, Colin. We appreciate you coming up and the update and everything like that. All right, next on the agenda is number fourteen, which is executive session, and of course, the South Dakota Codified Law one dash two-five dash two, number one for personnel. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we do not have any other agenda items after this, so when we come out of executive session, we will adjourn. Thank you.